Well, good afternoon to everyone. I show 2:00 and we have over 80, I think we have three participants. So we will get started. So glad we have so many joining us. I continue to hear dinging and I'll see if we can get that stopped. I think we've got our chat feature turned on and we'll try and get that turned off because that's chiming in. We are delighted this afternoon that 88 people now have joined us and President Smart found time in his busy schedule. He did a marathon town hall this morning in Springfield with lots of good information. So President Smart, if you would kick us off with some opening comments, we're delighted to have you visit with us today.
Thank you, Dr. Lawler. And am I on the screen now? Can folks see me?
Yes, they can. I believe they can.
Okay. Perfect. Again, thanks. Thanks for your participation in the town hall meeting here today. As Dr. Lawler said, we did a, we did a three-hour virtual town hall for our Springfield campus this morning, about two and a half hours of which were questions. And so we know, I mean, that indicates clearly what challenging times we're in right now. As challenging and as hard as it was to transition to alternate delivery and work from home 10 weeks ago, it's even more challenging to figure out how we reopen campus and recover from everything we've been under, particularly given the budget scenario that we're going to be looking at, both for the remainder of this year and for next year. I was on a call with the governor this morning at 9:00 before the Springfield Town Hall kicked off. He, in short, told us there is more withholding coming in June for the current budget year, and there will be significant additional withholding coming for budget year FY21 that starts July 1st. So we'll be dealing with the most challenging budget scenario we've ever seen for next year, right in the middle of the kind of pandemic we haven't seen in over a century. But here's what I would tell you that I have learned in the last two and a half months of working through this. Our employees, our faculty and staff, our leadership team, we have risen to the challenge and we will continue to rise to the challenge. We keep our eyes on the prize and continue to work for what's best for our campus, what's best for our system, what's best for our students. Then we will get through this and we will get through it, having learned a lot and even better prepared to carry on our mission. And so again, thanks for, thanks for tuning in today. Dr. Lawler's going to run this meeting. She's going to do a presentation and answer questions, but I, but know that I will be on the call all the way to the end to listen to both the presentation you receive and the input you are giving, so that together we can all make the best decisions for our employees, for our students, and for the university. Shirley, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you, President Smart. We'd like to start today by just giving you a real brief overview of what's taken place the last couple of months. And so if we could go to that next slide, Trish. We participated on the COVID-19 core team established in Springfield in February. And again, what a great time it is to be a part of a system because we had a couple of experts there that worked with us. David Hall, the Director of University Safety, and Karen McGinnis, who is the Emergency Preparedness Manager, came to this campus, the West Plains Campus, to work with us to establish a plan to minimize our risk. And we were so appreciative of that. So we were ready to move forward. Our communications department put together the COVID-19 website. Hopefully you are connecting with that on a regular basis to see what the updates are because we keep that updated on a regular basis. On the student support side of the campus, we have, we feel like we've done an excellent job with the Student Support Services. Our students have told us that because we have surveyed them. When we left here on March the 12th, we did not, we never dreamed that we'd spend the next two weeks doing nothing but working toward taking our university toward a totally online college. But that's what we did. That's what you did. Faculty, staff, every employee worked hard to make that, bring that to a reality. On the Friday before classes started on March the 27th, we communicated with our students that we would be totally online. Live by our computer lab has stayed open through all of this. Not only have students had a place to come and work if they did not have good connectivity at home, but we furnished them with hotspots. Over 66 hotspots have been given out by our IT department. And David Young and his IT staff have done an outstanding job of working with all of us to make certain that we could quickly and effectively transition to offices at home. We continue to keep our dorms and our dining services open through this time. We only had 10 to 12 students left at each Grizzly House and the Lofts, but we did take care of the needs of those students. Classes, online classes kicked off March the 30th, and the Griz Care Helpline went into effect. That team has worked so hard to meet the needs of students. They received over 100 calls a week. They dealt with apparently approximately 600 calls to accommodate the needs of the students and answer their questions. We announced our summer classes would be totally online. That's not too much of an adjustment for us. Last summer, we had nearly 80% of our courses online. So again, this summer, we'll be totally online. The month of April, our advisors and our support staff did a tremendous job of making calls. Over 1,000 of our current students were assisted with calls and assisted with any problems that they had. We sent a survey to our students to ask how we were doing with our online course offerings. And for the most part, we received very positive feedback, a high correlation between whether a student had a good experience and what their internet connectivity was. 60% of the students said they had a good or great experience with online, and 63% of students said they had great computer connectivity, great or good. So there was a high correlation there. So we know that plays a big role. We were very appreciative of the hotspots that we were able to get for the students and faculty and staff as well. You know that we have rescheduled our West Plains commencement for Saturday, August the 8th, at 10:00 at the Civic Center, and we certainly hope everyone will join us there. We have been able to provide some financial support through not only the foundation. Since March the 12th, we've had $17,000 contributed to this campus, but we have also had contributions from the CARES Act, Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. There are three phases to that act. Phase one, we automatically, if a student met the requirements for phase one, they received a check. And 666 students received a check in phase one for $250 to help them during this trying time. That was $166,500. Phase two is where we are today. We have 183 applications. Those students have applied for $1,000 of support each, and we're reviewing those applications and should push that money out before the end of this month. Now moving on to look at the timeline. Last week, the week of May 11th, all the administrative council supervisors should have turned around and had Zoom meetings, as you've had Zoom meetings for the entire last two months, but they met with frontline folks to talk about reopening. So they started planning each area, how they would return. This week, Monday, May 18th, the core team, the administrative council, and our assistants have returned to campus. Next week, Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, the frontline supervisors and department heads will return to campus and plan how their folks will start to come back in and transition to campus. And then on Monday, June the 1st, for the most part, the remainder of the staff will return. However, not everyone will return. Some will continue to work from home because perhaps they have a COVID-related reason. They have someone in their household that's highly at risk. They feel like they themselves have a compromised immune system. They feel that they can work very effectively from home, and so perhaps they're going to rotate back and forth with some of the other individuals in their department. So we're leaving that up to supervisors to make those determinations. For the most part, the remainder of the staff will return on June 1. We also have eight employees that were placed on the 2/3 category, in which they're working at home through June and July, or they have gone to the 2/3 category and have opt to come back then at August 1st at a full-time pace. Again, we are making accommodations for individuals who need them, but our campus is open for business on July 1, on June, June 1. Now let's look at that timeline a little closer, just to give you some real quick, some specifics. Prior to employees coming back on campus, our custodians have done incredibly intensive, deep cleaning. We have ordered a lot of the personal protective equipment, the masks, the gloves, the hand sanitizers. We've had many questions about masks being worn, about how the areas are being sanitized. We are still working through many details and some of those policies. Again, we have started to return to work this week as far as the administrative members of the college. Next week, we will start bringing back more full-time students, I'm sorry, full-time staff members. Our students will, can use the campus facilities for summer school. Our summer school will start Monday, June the 8th. The library hours, Garnet Library, will be open 9 to 6, Monday through Thursday; Sunday, 1 to 5, starting June 1. Again, many faculty members and students will be happy to hear that the Garnet Library will reopen again, 9 to 6, Monday through Thursday; 1 to 5 on Sundays, starting June 1. Live by our computer lab as well will be open Monday through Friday, 10 to 6. Again, multiple communications will go out, keeping you posted. That team has been great. Cheryl Caldwell and her team have been great to keep us posted. And so our STAR sessions have been pushed out to July and August. Commencement again moved to August 8th. Be sure and have that on your calendar. And then August the 17th, our fall semester hopefully will be able to begin with both some seated, some online, some hybrid courses, but with our faculty all being prepared to go totally online again if needed. Please remember some really good, helpful links that we have on our website. These are all excellent links if you'll go to the COVID-19 website to talk about updates, our travel policies, and any restrictions in place. And then finally, some things to keep in mind as we talk about coming back to work. We can still limit exposure by rotating our departments. Some people, again, not everyone will be back June 1. That's totally being managed by each supervisor in each area. We just need to make certain that we're serving our students and that as students come to campus this summer and they need services, that we have those here, the Financial Aid Office, the Admissions Office, the Business Office, advisors. We need to be able to serve our students. So again, employees can continue to work from home. Let's make certain we're connecting, so you should have already been connecting with your supervisor. Hopefully, there's no one listening to this call who's an employee and you haven't had a conversation with your supervisor about what your plan is to come back. If you are sick, stay at home. And again, we want you to connect with IT. As of today, you should have an office at home that is meeting your needs, just as well as your workspace is here on campus, and you need to keep that intact. So if IT needs to help you with some additional connection or you need some additional accommodation, please let us know. We need you to keep your home office, your home workspace, ready to go. And if you are sick, stay at home. Working through some last additional details, the campus buildings, we will be reopening many of the buildings, but some will be closed. And we will post that list for you so that you can see. More than likely, your building will be open. We're only closing buildings such as Putnam and others where food service and those things where we just, students aren't on campus, so we won't be using them. We'll be posting where the access and entry points are. We're going to be installing hand sanitizers, one entrance in, hand sanitizers available, all the signage and things. We will keep you posted as we move forward. And as I've already said, preparing for future situations makes certain you have connected with IT and that you're prepared to go back to a home environment if we need to continue to, continue with offering our students the college experience that they'd like to have, but we're going to have to go back to a homework environment. So make certain you keep that workspace available to you at home. Having said all that, we turn to the budget. Wanted to give you a little bit of a budget update. We've had, the last two months, we've spent everyone getting established, working from home. We've made it through this spring semester. Again, much thanks to everyone. But now we look at the budget. For FY20, we had sent this, what you're seeing on the screen now, out to you earlier. You know that there was a withhold on FY20 this academic year, July 1 through June 30th, FY20. We had 510,000 withheld. We had some revenue losses and expenditures. We had to do some refunds. We've shut some services down. We've had some increased costs. So those were some losses and expenditures. How did we try to balance FY20 with that withhold and some losses? We had approximately $342,000 that we had not allocated for this year, so we were able to utilize that. We have a hiring freeze on, so we do have some open positions, and we've had some considerable savings in those open positions. We've reduced student workers and part-time staff. We've moved some individuals to 2/3 pay. We have brought all facility projects to a halt. And then to look forward to registration for summer and fall, we have lifted the financial hole cap on a student's account from $100 to $500, all in an effort to try and balance our budget. Just last week, when we had the Board of Governors meeting and specific spreadsheets, specific journal entries were shown regarding the West Plains budget, we were in pretty good shape. We felt good about what we had been able to do to balance and keep our revenues covering all of our expenses and when we were in the black. As President Smart referenced earlier, we did have a call with the governor this morning. For FY21, we're in, we're not anticipating, we've been told that we can expect budget cuts. So those will be coming, those will be forthcoming. The expenses for our institution have increased significantly due to the purchase of personal protective equipment and our cleaning supplies. Our enrollment numbers, enrollment is a real question mark. As of today, we are down 7% for summer and 21% for fall. That is very, very concerning, but we are implementing every cost-saving measure that we can consider. Due to these increased expenses and budget uncertainty, our Board of Governors last Friday did approve West Plains to increase for in-state students, a 4% per credit hour increase for this coming year. Again, when we reviewed our budget as recently as last Friday, we did not see, we did not feel the alarm. We didn't see the need to talk about layoffs or furloughs, and we have not done layoffs or furloughs. But there is uncertainty here, and we certainly will try and proceed as cautiously as we can. The administrative team here has worked very hard to bring us into the black in the last couple of years, and the university has just adopted some FY21 budget principles that hold first and foremost to the concepts that we must keep the quality of all of our academic programs, and we must keep our programs affordable for our students. Student success is our primary objective. We will monitor the budget situation very, very closely, and we will keep you apprised as we know what those cuts are. Again, we, we work hard to always make certain that our revenue is covering the expenses, and so we appreciate everyone staying, keep apprised and listen to, look at the communication pieces we send out because we do want to keep you posted on, in, as far as the budget situation. But it's been a tough, tough year. Shouldn't say a tough year. It hit us about March 1st, but until then, we thought we were doing very well, and we still. I'm so proud and so pleased. As we look at this survey we've done with students, the students are giving accolades and shout-outs to faculty, to staff, and, and we've made it through the spring semester. Wasn't stress-free. It wasn't a delight for many people. Many people are, have expressed that they're stressed. They hope they never have to go through another semester like that one. But we made it, and the students made it to the finish line, and so we thank you all for, for getting us through the spring semester. Now, in conclusion, I just want to answer a few questions. We asked that you submit your questions ahead of time so that we could get specific responses to them. One question from a faculty member asked that about could his class schedule, this is a faculty member, could his class schedule perhaps be rearranged? He is the primary caregiver for an elderly parent, and because they need to safeguard them from this infection, and because this fall, it is predicted that there could be another wave of the coronavirus. They currently have all on-seated classes, but could those seated classes be converted to online classes even though the schedules already been printed? And my, our response is absolutely, we will work with you. My suggestion to, and I responded to this person individually, but I would say to every faculty member listening, please connect with Dr. Lancaster and/or Dr. Orf as soon as possible if you see that you need some accommodations, because we certainly can work to ensure that we meet your needs. And again, if you have a situation in which, that just described here, where you're working with a member of your family living in your household that is compromised in this situation, and you really need to be, take extra precaution because this, we are in uncharted waters here with this virus, but we certainly want to work with you and accommodate you in any way we can. The second question, these, the next three are from students. For this current academic year, should students be expecting any refunds? Because for many weeks of the spring semester, students did not have access to some things like the Student Rec Center or student activities. Those costs quickly add up, and many other schools have done some similar refunds. I would remind students that I certainly hear you, understand your concern, but your, all your fees are rolled into a, one common fee, a student fee of $20. And we feel like that during this past two months, we have done an excellent job of rolling all of those student services out. Now you may not have been able to go to the Student Rec Center, but many students haven't, don't use the Student Rec Center. You may not have been able to go to Haastar for a movie night, but as far as student services, our Board of Governors just this past Friday approved all of the student capital projects and those kinds of things. But at this time, I, is Dr. Angela Totti, I believe, is on the, the town hall, the virtual meeting with us. So if Dr. Totti could join us and just give her thoughts on the student fee. Dr. Totti, are you there?
Yes, I am. So as Dr. Lawler indicated, now, at this point, we're not looking at a refund for the common fee. In addition, I think it's important for our students to know that while some of the things that would normally be available were not there, like the Rec Center, we had to very quickly make some adjustments and offer some things that typically we would not, like the hotspots. We had to authorize some additional mental health resources for our students. So while those services may not have been there, there were other things provided. So we did work very hard to make sure that our students' experience was positive, as positive as it could be in the circumstances, and we do hope that that has shown through, and feel like it has from the survey response. We also have worked really hard to fully participate in the CARES Act funding, getting that funding out to our students, directly to our students, so that it can be used to provide for those things. And of course, that funding probably far over what we would have been able to do from a refund as far as the, the financial piece of it. It far exceeded what we would have done as a refund for a common fee.
Okay. Very nice. Thank you, Dr. Totti. I appreciate that. Next question from a student. When will students know for sure that campus will be open for seated classes? Well, I would have to preface this with, I don't think anyone right now in the world knows for sure what will happen this fall, but we are planning on being open with a normal fall schedule come August 17th, with some seated classes, but I fear there is a new normal now. And I'd like to call on Dr. Lancaster to jump on with me right now because I know he and his team have worked with the faculty, and there are various formats that have been adjusted and for classes to take place this fall. So Dr. Lancaster, are you there?
I am. Thanks, Dr. Lawler. We, as scheduled, as originally planned, we will have seated, hybrid, and online courses this fall. However, we are looking at how do we deliver those, and are there options in our delivery of those courses for whatever can, you know, whatever might come our ways? We're looking at all these contingency plans and some scenarios, and that's not just for the fall, it's all for the future. the fall, it's also for the spring. So one of those, one of those ideas that we're tossing around, and I'll hear more from faculty within the next week with their recommendation, but is that we'll use something that I'm calling the flipped hybrid. And so we'll take seated courses and even the hybrid courses that we have down. We'll divide them in half, and half the students will come on one day, say it's a Tuesday, Thursday class, half the students will come on Tuesday, the other half will come to campus on Thursday, and the seated part, and then they'll flip as far as the online portion of those courses. So that's one idea that we're looking at. We're also looking at block classes perhaps for the spring. Didn't feel like that's something we could do in the fall, there'd be too much disruption for faculty and for students who have already started to register. All along the way, we're looking at maximizing space within classrooms. We may be limiting enrollment in some of those classes because of the need for space. And there's other things that we're working on. We're going to be following the guidelines that, as we're working with our Springfield colleagues about masks and other aspects of that day-to-day activity on campus, and we want to make, we want students safe and faculty and staff safe as much as we can.
One last question I have from a student is, if online is the only option, will we still have to pay more for online courses? And you know, many times, we've answered the question about the additional cost for online courses, and we continually remind individuals that there's a tremendous expense associated with the online platforms. We have the licenses for the Blackboard platform, we're increasing our Zoom licenses, we have additional servers, and we have IT staff that have to manage and take care of those online platforms. The training and other items add to expenses. So unfortunately, online is, does take extra expenses and resources. So that concludes the questions that were offered up before this began. So I would like to always encourage you to send us your questions. Please send them to my email site here at the Chancellor's Office. We will answer those very quickly. There are many questions we can't answer yet. We are still working on policies regarding masks and other things, and we will continue to work on those questions and get those pushed out to you. Again, I cannot tell you how much we appreciate everyone's hard work. There has been so much hard work and effort that has gone into building these online courses. Everyone has pulled in the same direction, and again, we brought the spring semester in and the students successfully finished up for the most part, and we could not be more appreciative. There will be another Town Hall meeting. We'll schedule the next one for June the 10th from 2 to 3. Again, we'll ask that if you have any questions, to submit those. And again, as I always say to you, never hesitate to give me a call or stop by the office. We are so appreciative of all your hard work, and we hope some of you are going to get a chance now to enjoy some downtime this summer. So we look forward to seeing you in the near future, and hopefully you'll join us for the next Town Hall meeting on Wednesday, June 10th. Thank you so much for spending this time with us this afternoon.